Now come to order, we are holding the meeting of the October meeting of Fayette County School Corporations Board of School Trustees. We have with us students from Eastview Elementary this evening who are going to be leading us into pledge. Please stand.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I believe that we'll be having Mr. Small to come forward and to make a presentation about Eastview Elementary.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'll tell you, as new principal at Eastview, Eastview has become one of my favorite things to talk about.[88.36][88.36](Laughter) And actually, and that's because there are really just a lot of great things happening at Eastview. In fact, because there are so many things, I had a hard time deciding what are we going to present in five to 10 minutes. And about that time, I had some students come to me with the idea of, hey, we want to start a school news program to show weekly on our closed-circuit TV. And I'm not the brightest guy in the world, but I put two and two together and I thought, hey, this is a great opportunity to create something to show tonight while teaching these kids how to do all that. So I have with me Mason Hensley, Kira Hotman, and Kayden Friend, and along with their teacher, Mrs. Arie. What we've done is we have turned them loose with the camera, showed them how to use some software, and they've put together a really cool video that shows some great things going on at Eastview. So really, we just want to show that to you, and I'll let Mason, if you want to go up and hit play, we should be good to go.
(Inaudible)
Welcome to the first edition of Eagles News News. I'm Kayden.
And I'm Mason.
Each week, we're going to bring you news, whether in a little bit of fun, from around Eastview.
A couple of weeks ago, we got some exciting news. Eastview has been rated an A school. We did really well on ICSE because of all of your hard work.
Last week, one of our students was recognized for his excellent writing skills.
Sam Mills is a winner of the Altrusa Essay Contest for grades three, third, fourth, and fifth. He wrote an essay answering the question, "How can you make a difference in your community?" He will receive a check for $100 and be recognized by the Altrusha Challenge. Congratulations, Sam.
You may have noticed us around school with our camera a lot lately. That is because we have been creating a video that highlights some of the awesome things that happen here at Eastview.
So, sit back and enjoy a peek at our first video, "A Day at Eastview."
Which was, I believe, founded in 1865? The model one, established in 1918.
Our day starts at 8:05 with morning announcements.
In September, we started Universal Breakfast, and it's been a success. Before Universal Breakfast, about 50 students ate here each morning. Now over 200 students eat breakfast here every day.
What do you think about Universal Breakfast?
Um, I think it's pretty good because I really don't have to get up early in the morning because I can see it's like 7 o'clock and I don't have to get up at 8:00. It's supposed to be get up and eat breakfast and go get dressed and stuff like that, so...
You have any other thoughts?
Um, most of the stuff that they share with me actually really...
One way that we are becoming college and career-ready is by learning to use lots of technology. Here's one of our first graders, Jenna, using a smartboard to lead her class and calendar.
Sometimes we use smartboards as a class in small groups or individually to practice writing, reading, math, science, or social studies.
Here, our third graders are using the smartboard to explore area and perimeter.
We also use computers throughout our day. We type reports, research, practice skills, and communicate with others.
Something else that is new to Eastview this year is close reading.
Every class at Eastview is learning to read closely. In the upper grades, we are learning how to read challenging texts so that we can answer questions with evidence. Explain the text to others, write about it with evidence to support our thinking.
This involves reading a text more than one time. By closely reading complex text more than one time, we are able to dig deep in our understanding. While reading, we are learning to annotate our thinking.
Taking maps helps us answer higher-level questions. An important part of close reading is having the time to discuss our thinking with others. We also discuss this every class and sometimes even debate. Here, Mrs. Swan's class is debating the immigration crisis after reading several articles about the topic.
So that's a glimpse at a day here at Eastview. We hope you enjoyed your visit.
That's all for E&amp;N News.
Mason, you want to help us jump?
Sure.
Never mind, she's choosing.
You may have noticed that we pass around to school with our camera a lot lately. That's because we have been creating...[555.12][555.12](Laughter)
And that's, again, that's what we have for you tonight. I'm really excited to see where these kids take this project. This was their first video, and go from there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Small and students. It was a very nice presentation. Very good. Okay, at this point, we're gonna take care of one business item before we do some recognitions that I know people are expecting to do that, but I do need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hilton? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Now we have time for recognition. Mr. Ely, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Burtz. And thanks to the board and central office for an opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding students at the Career Center. Each year, we certainly have a lot of students participate in our regional, state, and national contests, and they do quite well. So this year, we thought we'd bring some of our returning seniors to share with you their experience at contests last year, and these students are back with us again this year, so if they'll come forward, I think we have four with us this evening. They travel quite a bit and they gain a lot of experience in meeting students from all over the United States, and even if they go to Nationals, they meet students from around the world. So these are not just local organizations. They represent HOSA, which is our health organization, and Skills USA, which represents all our other programs at the Career Center. So I'd like for these students to tell you a little bit about each of themselves, and then we'll wrap it up.
I'm Kat Gilis, and I won State at Skills USA in prepared speech.
I'm Caitlin Heber. I am from Connersville High School. I am involved in that HOSA program, and we participated in (inaudible).
I participate in the HOSA program. I go to Connersville High School, and we did public service announcement for State and Nationals.
I'm Billanne Irdisel. I'm from Rushville High School, and I competed in HOSA and did life support skills at State and Nationals.
These students had qualified to State either winning first place or in some cases finishing the top two or three in order to go on to Nationals, and they represented us quite well. We're hoping for great things out of them again this year. This is their second year, and we congratulate all of them. Thank you.[750.12][750.12](Applause)
Along with our congratulations, we wish you a lot of luck. Where are the Nationals, did you say?
Uh, well, last year, Skills was in Kansas City, but this year, it's, I believe, Louisville. Louisville. And I think HOSA always is Orlando.
It's not always this year. Those coming years, California.
So it moves to California this year, so it's quite an experience for these students.
Very good. Thank you very much. Do we have any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we move on to our consent agenda. In the agenda, we have approval of notes from the regular business meeting of 9/9/14, executive meeting of 9/9/14, and a special session of 9/17/14. The personnel report, which included retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. Approval of September 2014 claims number 36696 through number 37056. And at this point, I believe that we have someone in the audience that wants to make a donation. Mr. Ely, I'll let you head that out again, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Burtz. We have a special group of folks here tonight to make a presentation to the Career Center, and in a student's behalf, Joe Connell was a student with us two years past and had an accident, losing his life. Joe was in our precision machining program, so I'm asking Rick to come up with me. Rick was his teacher and mentor for two years. And at this time, I'll ask the group coming up, and Mr. and Mrs. Caldwell, Emily will share with you her thoughts on making this contribution. It's really something special.
Good evening. My son, Joe Connell, was a 2009 graduate of Connersville High School. Joe attended the precision machining classes junior and senior year at the Whitewater Technical Career Center. Because Joe was able to leave school with a skilled trade, he was able to get jobs when a recession was putting many people out of work. I remember telling Joe pretty much that exact statement, and that he made the right choice to attend WTCC. Joe spoke about his experience and his instructor, Miss Beaver, often, and always in a positive light. His experience at WTCC obviously made a big impact on Joe. To talk about it enough at home to make this much of an impact on me. Joe fell asleep on his way to work and was taken home to heaven September 28th. Excuse me, 2011. On September 28th, 2014, was Joe's third anniversary in heaven. On that day, to celebrate the life of Joe, myself, my husband, Sam, my family, Joanne, my dad, my mom, Joanne, my dad, Ray, my sister, Suzie, and nephew, Luke, family, close friends, held the first annual 525 Anything With Wheels Cruisin' and Car Show with all proceeds going to WTCC. The unbelievable turnout for the event not only humbled me, but also gave me the sense of comfort, knowing the memory of Joe and the young man he had become was still very much remembered by many. At this time, myself, my husband, Sam, family and friends in memory of Joe would like to present a check to WTCC in the amount of $2,500.[994.32][994.32](Applause)
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Along with this donation, there is also a grant from the Louise Joyner Life Skills Cooking Grant for Maplewood Life Skills Class, a donation valued at $800 from the Richmond Social Security Office for WTCC Labs. So with that, that's everything that's within the consent agenda, and we are voting to accept these donations that have been made now. So, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. President, that's open.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Moving now into the action items, Personnel Report, Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burtz. And our members of the board have a few persons for your consideration this evening. One would be Steve Tankton, a night custodian at WTCC, effective October 6th, Rodney Rader, night custodian. He actually CMS and CHSE at his schoolship, effective September 29th, 2014. And Kristen Roberts, a special education assistant at Maplewood, effective September 16th. In addition, you have at your place this evening your teacher contract update. This is your booklet, and that is a memorandum of understanding, Appendix F, which was determined to be a necessity following your agreement, paying the teacher's contract agreement last month. And this memorandum was written to address a situation where a teacher went on maternity leave for three quarters of the year of his past year and did not receive an evaluation or a rating. As a result, she would not be eligible for the years of service provision of the contract. And since this does impact her base pay, the cumulative impact of that omission did not seem to be fair to punish her for that. So as a result, the MOU recognizes the years of service and satisfies this scenario. And if there's any questions, I would recommend approval of the, both of the personnel items presented this evening, as well as the approval of the additional grant on the budget. Okay?
I move to approve it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the Head Start Priority Guidelines Orientation and Policy Council Bylaws. Dr. Ricky, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Burtz. Well, I will just let Lori take the floor here. She does such an outstanding job of keeping us in compliance with all of these state and federal Head Start rules, so Lori, take it away.
That makes it sound like it's gonna be exciting.[1197.75][1197.75](Laughter) I'm trying, I'm trying. First of all, it says approval of Head Start Priority Guidelines, and you, as a group, did that the last time I was here, so tonight, we're just gonna go over some quick orientation about Head Starts, some new things that are coming down the pike, and then again, we need you to approve our policy council bylaws. So I'll go ahead and start with our orientation, and I sent you a report that talks about the Head Start program. It's a federal program. It was part of the 1960s President Johnson's War on Poverty, and we operate under a federal grant, so we have to follow federal guidelines. And the original purpose of the program, and the purpose even today, is to prepare children who live in poverty for school, to get them ready not only academically but socially. Make sure they're healthy enough to learn, and make sure that we engage parents in our program. So it's a little bit more than just parent involvement. We are to train our parents to be engaged in their children's school success. So that's a challenging role for us to play. Again, our program's a little different than most other Head Starts that you probably know about. We are a program of Fayette County Schools. Fayette County Schools is our grantee, and so the governing board, the school board is our governing board, and they have the responsibility just to make sure that we are in compliance with all those wonderful federal laws and regulations. One of the new things that is coming down the pike, and we just got the memorandum last week, and I sent it to Janey just to start thinking about, is that from this day forward, Head Starts have to have a fiscal review every year. Before, the policy was for government agencies, which ours is one of, that we could follow their policies. So we were part of the school corporations audit, every state audit every two years, but now, we will have to have an additional audit every year. So that's something we're gonna start working now. And I'll send you a little more information about that, but we're gonna be looking at finding someone who can audit our program on the off-years of the school board year. So that's, again, just a new procedure they put in place to make sure we're being fiscally responsible for the money that they give us. So, also, we're governed by the policies and procedures, not only of the federal regulations, but Fayette County Schools. And again, I always tell people, and we've shared that with Policy Council as well, I just think that having a grantee of Fayette County Schools just really kind of sets a bar a little bit higher for our program. We not only have to meet those federal regulations, but we also have to meet the policies of Fayette County Schools, and I do believe that that puts another safeguard in place to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to provide a quality program for our children. So, we do have our Policy Council, and that group is also charged with being part of the governing body and sharing that governance with this group. Locally, we have six Head Start classrooms, and they are staffed by certified licensed teachers, and we also have health coordinators because we have to provide that health safety net for our children, and family service staff supports them as well. Our funding level is back to 162 children. The sequestration cut was refunded, so we have 162 children, but we also have a partnership with special services here in Fayette County, and that provides services for 20 to 30 additional children for our program. One thing I did want to share with you is our federal review. Always in the past, that was that every three years, we got to enjoy a federal team of investigators who came down and spent a week with us. And now, because our program was one of the first in Indiana to receive a five-year grant, that was supposed to be a bonus.[1427.62][1427.62](Laughter) It had a little hidden agenda that we were just made aware of last month, and that was that instead of having one federal review, a week-long event every three years, we will have five individual federal reviews within a two-year period starting, I think they said the monitoring season, as they call it. Sounds pleasant. It starts November 1st. So this year, as in year two of our five-year grant, we will be reviewed on environmental health and safety, and that would be visiting our classrooms and our playgrounds to make sure that they are up to code. Our fiscal policies will be reviewed, as well as how we bring children into our program. Do we meet our 162 funded, and how do we do that? Do we ensure that the needy children come in first? They'll be looking at that. And then the last thing they'll look at this school year is using an assessment they call class. They will observe all of our classrooms, and the instrument that they use measures teacher-student interaction to make sure that it's positive, that there's enough of it, that it's directed. So they will be observing every classroom during a two-to-three-day stay to use that instrument and assess our teachers as far as student-teacher interaction. So again, monitoring season starts in a month. I wouldn't say we're ready today, but we'll be more ready by the end of this month, and then every day after that, we're already starting to tear apart what they say we have to have and make sure that we have it in place. And lastly, I did bring with you as part of just our orientation, our PIR report, I won't tell you what we call it, but it is the Performance Indicator Report, and it's just that Head Start has so many requirements that you have to meet every year. This is just our report for last school year, 1314, and how we completed those requirements, how our agency did as far as being in compliance with what they require us to do. So I'm just gonna pass that out, and I'll let you look at that, and again, if you ever have any questions or just need some clarifications, just call me at the Resource Center or shoot me an email, and we'll make sure that we get those to you. So, and then the item that we needed approval on was our Policy Council bylaws. And again, Policy Council is federally mandated. Every Head Start program has to have one. It's comprised of 51% parents, they meet monthly, and then the other composition of the council are community representatives. And again, the goal with that is to make sure that parents are involved and engaged in making program design and implementation plans, so that they are well aware of what's going on in the program, and that they actually can have some input into some shared decision-making for our program. So the bylaws, again, just follow the pattern of any bylaws for any club or community council. It just lists the name and purpose, the membership, officers and their responsibilities, when are you gonna meet, what are the standing committees, and any voting guidelines that that council has. And the only changes we really had this year, we had more than we usually do, but they were pretty small. We wanted to make sure that all the dates were pertinent, to make sure that it was up to date and current. We did change the wording in the composition section because this year, we no longer have a full-day classroom. We have six half-day classrooms, so we just needed to change the wording in that to make that current. In terms of membership, we wanted to insert that a member will be contacted to see if they're still interested in serving when they've missed three consecutive meetings, and that's excused or unexcused. We had several community partners who, they worked with our program, but it's just become increasingly hard for community partners to come to a meeting. As budgets are cut and their time restraints are increased, it's hard for them to come to a meeting every month. So we still have involvement with them, but as far as them serving on council, we're gonna let them determine after three meetings if they can or cannot participate. And we did add just a designated person, just to reflect who would actually be taking the minutes at the meeting. And the last change that we want to recommend is that we inserted self-assessment committee into our standing committees. We had to change our self-assessment around last year, and so now, we just have a self-assessment, one committee instead of four. So we needed to make that current by adding that to our bylaws. And I think those were the only changes that we were recommending this year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. All right, if you've heard the report, do I hear a motion to approve the Head Start Priority Guidelines Orientation and Policy Council bylaws?
President?
Thank you, Ms. Burtz. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seboy. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I hear none, the motion carries. Thanks again, Lori. All right. Moving on, we have the approval of resolution for appropriations and tax rates for 2015. Ms. Tallett?
Thank you, Mr. Burtz. With your permission, I'd like to just address all of the items related to the budget in one bundle, so you can move down the list appropriately. Would that be all right?
Sure.
Okay. This evening, we have five items on the agenda. These represent the finality for the board's part of the 2015 budget. I'll not go into detail about the budget again. If you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those. The first item that will be presented for your approval is a resolution of the appropriations and tax rates for 2015. tax rates for 2015. These are as outlined in what was presented for your consideration at previous meetings, and you have been provided copies of such. Additionally, there's a resolution to adopt the 2015 capital projects fund plan as it was presented for your consideration previously. There is a resolution to adopt the 2015 bus replacement plan for the years of 2015 through 2026, keeping in mind that this plan is revisited each year and presented for your consideration every year as part of the budgeting process. There is a tax neutrality resolution, which is related to the pension debt and the requirement of levy neutrality related to the issuance of those pension bonds years ago. And then the final item is the tax levy resolution whereby you give myself and/or Dr. Hodges permission to make the needed adjustments or reductions to the budgets required by the Department of Local Government Finance. Mr. Burchett, if you or any of the other members of the board have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Obviously, a lot of this is just regulations, the laws that you have to do.
These are the required documents for the, from the Department of Local Government Finance for the budgeting process. After they're approved and signed this evening, I do have to upload them to Gateway. I have to publish a notice of adoption of the capital projects plan in the newspaper whereby the taxpayers have an opportunity to file an appeal with the county auditor if they have an issue with it. No one's appeared before us to express any concerns with our capital projects plan. To this point, I would not expect any issue related to that.
Okay.
And then previously, so, yeah. Required items. Housekeeping.
All right. But we do need to take each of these
Yes, please.
items individually and vote on them, okay? So.
I'm going to approve the resolution appropriations tax rates for 2015.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do I hear a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay.
Motion to approve the
Wait, 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 wait. The motion has been made second. Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
That's all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the approval of resolution for appropriations and tax rates carries. Now we're voting on the resolution to adopt the year 2015 capital projects fund plan for the years 2015 through 2017.
I'd like that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Resolution to adopt the 2015 bus replacement plan for the years 2015 through 2026. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Seboy. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. The tax neutrality resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And lastly, the tax levy resolution. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Seboy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. So we got you taken care of, didn't we?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay, moving on then to the next action item, policy update, third reading, 723.1, possessing firearms on school property. Dr. Hodges.
Board in your pocket, I gave you what really we call an example for. It's really the fourth draft of this policy. It has gone through a policy review committee. They unanimously supported this policy to be brought forward to the board as is. And I'll recommend you adopt policy 7.23.1 as presented this evening.
What is your pleasure regarding this policy?
I'm going to, excuse me, go ahead. I'm going to accept the policy as presented.
Mr. Taylor makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? I'll be happy to discuss. I do not approve of this policy at all. The reason I do not approve of it is, okay, we're talking about the right of bearing firearms by a school board member at any school function or anything they want to do, actually, on school property. It's strange to me that the school board would be allowed to bring a weapon to a meeting. Dr. Hodges, we didn't give you or anybody else the right to have one. Why do we, why do we need them here? You say for the purpose of security. Well, we have school security people. So hopefully, they have been trained to provide the proper security. And I feel that if there is an issue, then we need to have them here. But to take that into our own hands and let's have five of you pulling out your guns, shooting at people, uh-uh. I'm not going to buy it. We're talking about children. This policy has to do with school board members and their right to carry a weapon. I'm not against people having weapons. There's a time and a place for everything. But I am 100% totally opposed to this policy.
I respect your position, Mr. Burchett. And in a perfect world, I couldn't agree with you more. But the issue is, for me anyway, is that Pandora's box has been opened. And when we go about creating gun-free zones, and I know that's not exactly what this is doing, but it's chipping away at that, at that opportunity to, to have something to be contrary to a potential issue that might come up at school function. I just think that gun-free zones are the shooter's playground. He has no fear of being shot at or stopped or, or in any way held responsible to stop his actions. And we're not going to have a school security officer at every event. Now, I'm not going to be the one to carry a firearm. I probably, you'll never see me with one here in the school board room. There's no reason for that. But the, the idea of telling the public and a prospective shooter that, no, there's not going to be any weapons at this event is a bad thing and a bad message to send. Because that person would know that he could come and not be challenged. And even though we do have police and security officers, it's going to take them time to respond. It may be five minutes and the police will be here. But in that five-minute time period, how much damage can be done? And how much damage has been, and we've all read about it in newspapers and CNN on TV of what can happen. And I just think that, that the issue of firearms is a serious issue, but it's guaranteed in the Constitution that we have a right to bear, bear arms. Our forefathers said that. All of them, they all signed the Constitution. And I just think they did it for a reason. And I think they are intelligent men and had thought all this through. And I just think it's, it's safer for the students to have responsible, law-abiding citizens in possession of firearms.
But you don't give any school employee the right to have a firearm.
The school employees have a right to have a firearm in their automobile and carry it to school. In the policy.
In the car, but they're going to run out. I just don't follow this. I'm sorry, folks. I just don't follow it. But that's why we're on the school board to discuss these things.
And that's all right. I respect your position, Mr. Burchett. That's, that's fine. And it is a touchy, a touching issue. But I feel more comfortable having somebody who's licensed and who has experience and training with a firearm at a school function. Now, I'm not crazy about them carrying them on their belt exposed. I think they should be concealed. But either way, I don't want a prospective troublemaker, I'll call them troublemakers, but I can say what I really think about people like that, to have the opportunity to come and out of their own free will, do all the damage they can do before the police show up. And there not be somebody there to stop them.
Okay. Anybody else want to discuss, have a feeling about it? All right, the motion has been made second. We'll get back to members here. Mr. Taylor made the motion. And Mr. Hilton, second the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Motion carries. The next is a discussion item, policy update 421, promotion, retention, assignment, CMS. Dr. Hodges.
Board in your pocket, you have a copy of proposed changes to policy 4.21. As I shared in background, this is being necessitated because we changed from a six-week grading period to a nine-week grading period. It just basically changes, recognizes that change in the way it's put up. We do have representation of middle school. If you have specific questions, feel free to ask those. I'll be happy to answer those. If not, we'll consider this first reading, and we'll bring it back next meeting for second reading and adoption.
Any discussion regarding this policy? Okay, doesn't look like there are any questions, so we'll move on. This is
Sounds good to me.
...discussion item, so we'll move on then. Any public comments about, any suggestions, ideas, or comments? Let me address the board at this time. Anybody have a comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the report item. Superintendent's Discussion Group, seeing none. Principal Directors Reports. Director, excuse me, Director of Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items to share with the board this evening. First of all, I know that the chart files will be here next month to have a brief presentation. And in addition to that presentation, we'll bring us up to speed on the summer lunch program and also our goals for 2014, 2015. In addition, we'll continue with our new teachers. Professional development classes will take place the 28th and the 30th. Our first-year teachers will be involved in effective lesson planning sessions. Our secondary teachers will be involved in a closed reading and informational text session. And finally, we'll have the opportunity tomorrow to work with our new assistants that supervise our playgrounds and provide a little training for them. Tomorrow, I'm looking forward to working with those folks tomorrow. With that, I have no other items for your attention this evening, Mr. Burchett.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Director of Finance Report.
I have no names.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just one thing, tomorrow is the big day. You knew about that, right? October 15th, when we find out our letter grades for the corporation. So it's, it's been all over Twitter and Facebook and everything. All those superintendents are very excited. And actually, we've got preliminaries, and we're pretty excited about it as well. And we hope you're pleased with the results. But we just, I mean, James kind of let his out of the bag on this video, but we're hoping it sticks.
Princess.
But tomorrow is when the DOE makes them official. So we just, last year, we were resented with some changes at the last minute, when it was before the state. So we're, we're pretty excited about what we're going to learn tomorrow. So stay tuned.
We will be hearing from you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report.
Board, if you give me a minute, I want to show you something that we have been working on. James, will it hurt if I just unplug your laptop? Well, I'm going to try to do two things at once, which is a dangerous thing for me to attempt. But we are working on some social media pieces for Fayette County School Corporation. One of the things that we are learning is that some things you can do, and nobody knows that you're doing those. There's some things, when you put them out there, the whole world sees what it is that you're doing. So we're not quite ready yet for primetime with, with our social media piece. But hopefully, by next board meeting, we'll be able to, to share some things with you. So you may hear some people talking about, did you see this? Or did you see that as it relates to Fayette County School Corporation? And what you see is something that is under construction. The other technology piece, I'll tell you, I was on the DOE website today looking to see if the grades were still embargoed or if we could share good news with you. We have good news to share. We're anxious to do that. And while I was looking at that, Superintendent Ritz is doing a three-part series on the state of the classroom. Part two is posted on the website. A lot of the things that we've been talking about, with No Child Left Behind, high-stakes testing, pretty much all the things that you hear us talking about. She's done a very nice job of talking about that in about, about a seven-minute presentation. So if you have a chance to look at that, you might want to take advantage of it. What I'm going to share with you now is something that really got its start very early on in my superintendency here. I was having a conversation with Mark Dinsler when Mark was on the board. And Mark said, you know, in a business that I used to be in, we used to do this thing called Monday morning quarterbacking. And he said, on Monday morning, we would get a report on sales and production and all those kinds of things. So we knew what was going on. He said, isn't there something you can do about that with school business? And so that planted a seed several years ago. And so as I've gone to different conferences, when people start talking about dashboards, I've always gone to those thinking, what is it that we can put up that would have interesting data, data that isn't just, that, that changes often enough to make it interesting for us to do that. And I've, I've really struggled. I finally ran across one this fall, and I thought, I kind of like what it says. So I'm going to show you, and again, this is still a work in progress, but I want to give you an opportunity to have comment on it. If you go to our webpage and you log in, this is one of the things I can do without everybody in the world seeing it till I'm ready for it. But if you scroll down after you've logged in, you'll find something that says Fayette County School Corporation Dashboard. And if you click on that, you'll see that we've included some things. It's a little, maybe a little hard to see where you're at. But what I've put on here is our extra end-of-course assessment pass rates for the last one, two, three, four, five years for English Language Arts. Remember, when you see charts like this, blue is the state, red is Fayette County School Corporation, and the end-of-course assessment pass rates for algebra. And you can see that, that we've made some pretty significant progress there in the mathematics area. You can see in the English area, English Language Arts, we are ahead of the state average. Those are high school tests down at the bottom. You're familiar with my line graphs that I show you every year about how we progress on I-Step with, with our math pass rates and our English Language Arts pass rates. I've just shortened that down a little bit so you can see how we're doing in that area. Whoops, 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 too fast. The, the next group of charts that I have, I have talked sometimes at our State of the School address on the SAT composite average. And you can see how we're doing there. And pretty much all the other graphs, you can see that we have, have some real opportunities for growth in this particular area. I've plotted out the graduation rate. You can see that the last two years that we have up there, we're finally above the state average in graduation rate. We're thrilled with that. The next one, what I've taken, we give three kinds of diplomas. We give a general diploma, Core 40 diploma, and an honors diploma. And I thought you might be interested in knowing, and I apologize for the focus on this. I think James had it just perfect, and I messed it up. But when you get on the webpage, we've got the percentages in there. You can see the percentage of the various diplomas we give. The blue is the general, the red is the Core 40, and the green is the honors diploma. In a perfect world, we'd like to see that green and red growing, and we'd like to see the blue reducing. And that's what you see in the last chart that we have there. The next set of data comes from presentations that Janie has been making the last few board meetings in regards to our financial. meetings in regards to our financial position. We have general fund revenue. Those bars are going the wrong way, but that isn't the way that they're going. You can see our general fund expenditures, and you can see that, that that has been a downward trend as well. And the other one that I think is really interesting is the assessed value. You can see at one point in time how high our assessed value was and to where it is now. And so I don't think that's a shock to anybody here in Faya County, but I think when you see it graphically, it tells you a little different story. And then the last piece I have, we have enrollment. The top chart is just broken down by grade level over a series of years. You can see that, that I need to add 14, 15 to that. And then the other one I think is really kind of interesting. We'll try to update this one month by month. It's the elementary school enrollment, and, and it's color-coded so that you can see how many students we have in each grade level by building. And so those are, those are the charts that I have chosen to put on our dashboard. We'll be, before we just make that open to everybody on the webpage, we're going to change things up just a little bit. If there are things there that you think are unnecessary, if you'll let me know, I'll be happy to make those changes. If there's suggestions on how we can make this look more attractive or something that might make people look at this more frequently, feel free to let me know. But I hope by next week, we'll have this on our regular webpage so that anybody in the community can just click right on that and take a look at our dashboard. But I think though, to me, when I put it together, I thought those were the things that I thought our community might be most interested in. But I have any questions on that?
This is on the dashboard now.
Correct. If you log in, if you log in as you would to get your Friday letter, then you go back to our main page, you'll scroll down, you'll find a place that says FCSC Dashboard. Click on it, and you go right to that. The last thing I have, this is our last school board meeting before, before election, and as we always said back home in Lake County, be sure to vote early and to vote often.
Does anyone have any comments for the good of the cause? Cindy, thank you again for providing great food for us. We like you when you do that. You're popular.
We actually like you all the time.
Thank you.
But really on food. Somebody else have a comment?
Just one quick comment. I had an opportunity to have a little discussion with Principal Judd this evening before the board meeting, and explain to Mr. Judd how good it was to be a board member at Faya County School Corporation. And the reason that is, is we all watch television, and we all see what happens at other school corporations, and thank, praise God, none of that's happened here. And I think that's because we have good people trying to do the right things. So I'd like to just compliment our, our corporation for, for doing, doing what it does and doing it how it does and doing it for the kids.
Mr. Small, again, thank you for your students being here and for your nice report, so. Anybody else have a comment? May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. We are adjourned.
Please see Cindy for signature.